I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at 5:34 PM. This is a finance subcommittee meeting. Joined by my colleagues, Tim Allen, who was part of the finance subcommittee, Zeta Govan, Michael Fenton, Jesse Letterman, Justin Hurst. I think those are all my colleagues that are here today. And if we could just go around and introduce ourselves, starting with you, Pat.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Patrick Burns, City Comptroller.
Thank you. Bob?
I'm Maggie IT.
Thank you. Melanie?
Melanie Akobi, Budget Director.
Thank you. City Hall?
Lindsay Hackett, Deputy CFO.
TJ Plant-Capo.
Thank you. Sergeant Benoit?
Sergeant Benoit, Springfield Police, I'm the Shannon point of contact.
Thank you. Lisa D'Souza?
Lisa D'Souza, City of Springfield Law Department.
Thank you. Chris Signoli?
Chris Signoli, DPW Director.
Thank you. Andy Doty?
Doty, CIO, City.
Thank you. I think, oh, Pat Sullivan?
Pat Sullivan, Director of Parks and Buildings.
Very much. Did I miss anyone?
I don't know if you got me, Tracy.
Oh, I did, Tim. I said you.
All right, thanks.
All right, thanks, Tim. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and get started and just go right down. It's easier for me if I just pull up a screen like this. So we'll start with the January Revenue and Expenditure Report. Unless anyone wants to share something on their screens, I don't have to do this. Okay, so Pat Burns, I guess you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, I'm presenting the January Revenue Expenditure Report. Revenue through the month of January or seven months of the fiscal year is 482 million, or 62% of the budget. The same period last year, revenue was at 443 million, or 60% of the budget. On the expenditure side, expenditures are at 475 million, or 61% of the budget. Same period last year, expenditures were 421 million, or 57% of the budget.
Are there anything else to go?
We're still watching the gasoline, as I've mentioned at the last few meetings. And with the way prices are going up, I think that's gonna be even a bigger problem than we had anticipated. That's the number one watch item at this point, and we're all hoping for no more snow naturally at this point also.
Yes, yes, yes. Can you tell me the revenue and expenditure numbers again and where they are? What percentage of the budget?
Sure. The revenue is 482 million, and it's 62% of the budget. And the expenditures are 475 million, and that is 61% of the budget.
Almost on track. Okay, and where were we last year? Do you have that?
Yes. The revenue at this point last year was 443 million, or 60% of the budget. And the expenditures were 421 million, or 57% of the budget.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from counselors? So we're watching the gas. That's the only thing that's trending higher than expected right now, Pat?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so we will move right along to the next item on the agenda, and that is the Law Department Expense Report.
Yes, this is the report that I've been working with Attorney D'Souza, that we're gonna present on a monthly basis. And I have incorporated the changes with the beginning balance of the 5 million, and now the balance through January. And if there's any specific questions on the expenses, Attorney D'Souza has joined us for this meeting.
Can we share that? Do you have that up? To share that report? And I know that there was a settlement idol, item on there. Has that already been settled in public knowledge?
Yes.
Okay. Are one of you looking for it, or are you looking for it, Pat?
Yeah, I just pulled it up here. Can everyone see it?
Yes, I can see it. Are there any questions from the counselor on the report?
I'm all set.
Okay. All right. Pat, thanks for sharing, and I wanted to welcome Counselor.
I got a quick question, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Did I just see that that was just for attorney's fees, or was that the settlement and attorney's fees?
That was for everything, Counselor.
That was for everything, okay. All right, and that, we can't get, we can't, not that I want to get into any details, but that's the fire station one, not fire, police department one?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, the check was made payable to the attorney for, but they always are.
Okay, but it was the one that occurred inside the police department, right? And that spread to outside?
In the lobby, yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, moving right along. It's the FY22 Shannon CSI Grant and time match required, And Sergeant Benoit, are you gonna speak to this item? Or Finance?
I believe Finance is gonna speak to this item. I'm here if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Right now, we're asking the City Council to approve a grant of 1.2 million and change. As you know, we posted an RFP as requested by the City Council, went through an entire process. The Shannon RFP was posted on September 27, 2021. Responses were due 10/18. The selection committee and award module was determined on 12/21. And the grant period runs from 2/7/2022 to 12/31/2022. And the group consisted of six individuals, two sworn officers from the police department, two employees from my office, one from Department of Recovery and Business Continuity, and another employee from technical compliance.
How many applications did you get in, TJ?
That one, I might have to ask Melanie and or Sergeant Benoit to answer.
We received 13 applications.
And how many were awarded?
Correct.
You said all were awarded?
Correct.
All 13 applications were awarded that came in?
And that includes three new partners.
Can you just let us know who those new partners are?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, was a question?
Who the new partners that were awarded are?
I can give them, TJ, if you'd like.
Yeah, if you have the three, she only asked for the three new ones. I have the list of them all.
Sure, we have Give Music Inc. is one of them. The other one?
Give Music Inc.
Correct, yep. The second one is Springfield Youth Athletics. And the third, I'm trying to find down the. The shoot hoops, thank you.
Shoot hoops, okay. And were they all awarded at the amount that they requested, or a lesser amount?
No, not all. We had to fit them all within existing funding that was available to us from the state. So we did have to adjust a few based off of what the application was submitted and what we were awarded by the state.
Okay, and how much of the Shannon Grant went to the police department?
TJ, you want me to take care of that one, or?
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at it, but if you want to answer, you can.
Sure. So we have, as part of the 1.2 million, we have 34, or sorry, 347, around 350,000 for overtime, and then 67,000 is for the personnel that are running the program.
347 for overtime?
Correct.
And just important to note, Madam Chair, is that to come up with the match, we've used 244,000 and change of personnel at the police department in the city, and 93,000 in fringe to come up with our match of 420,000.
Okay, and of that funding, is any of it for proactive work?
Sergeant Benoit, this is where we pass the baton to you for the police department's strategies.
Yes, good evening. What would you interpret as proactive work?
Well, I can't, I can never remember this term, but usually it's to go out and police neighborhoods that are already heavily policed. So to me, it's overpolicing. So when I think of outreach and proactive work, is it more community engagement? Any more outreach, any working with the youth in the community? Any working with organizations that work with the youth in the community? Is any of that for that?
So the answer is yes to all of those. It's a multi-pronged approach, the Shannon Grant. You've got social intervention, suppression, opportunity provision, organizational change, and community mobilization. The police department's main role in that is suppression. But we do partner with the other agencies to attend their events. You know, the various C3 units we have throughout the city. So we will, because we're getting back to normal, if you will, there will be a lot more community engagement and events that we will be using Shannon funds to attend to help prevent the gang activities.
And how, how, how much of that goes to suppression? Because that's the term that I was looking for.
So the police department's role is considered suppression. So that money, the 347,000, would be used as suppression. But again, that suppression money would also be used for officers to attend those events in the prevention role. So to, I hope that answers your question.
It's kind of just doing the same thing it's always done. I don't, I guess nothing new has been written into the grant. Counselor Govan?
Thank you so much, Chairwoman Whitfield. So my question is, on the other side, I don't know from last year or the past year's grant cycles, have there been any reports produced based on the outcomes of the money being spent, not just by the police department, but possibly by the other agencies that have received the Shannon money?
So yes, on that, every partner is tracked and is required to report quarterly, biennial, and annually reporting. So at the end of the year, they close out, they list all their activities that are completed. It's done on a state website, you know, all the data is inputted into there. And actually, if you go to the mass.gov Shannon site, you can pull up past reports. I do not believe the 2021 reports are published yet, but you can pull up the 2020 reports for the City of Springfield.
Thank you. I have seen those reports in the past, and I guess I would like to see a more comprehensive report. We're detailing the specific, maybe, I know you guys can't say this, but how many potential gang members or gang activities were prevented? I don't know, I don't know if that's possible, because that's the reason for the grant funding. And, you know, it would be good to know, possibly, you know, if, I don't know if there's some type of projections that could be made that would happen without this funding, as opposed to with the funding. I'm not sure, maybe I'm dreaming too big.
No, I understand what you're saying. I guess the issue would be, it's hard to measure negatives. So with your suppression, it's hard to say what you've prevented. You know, that's, that's what, that's the difficulties that we have.
And I understand that, and I'm hoping that one day we will be able to get to the point where we can say, well, because we've had these activities, you know, this was prevented. I can identify, because we did do the drug-free communities grant, where it was preventing drug use, so we don't know how many kids we prevented from doing it. So, but thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I just did want to mention to you that last year, we had all the organizations come to a finance committee meeting. It was like a two-hour meeting, and they actually informed us of what they do with the Shannon Grant money. I plan on doing that again in the future. So they, they did report out, and a lot of them sent us their reporting documents ahead of time. Some did not. So we'll ask for that information again, just to see what everyone's doing, not to put anyone like under the gun or anything like that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Counselor Hurst?
I think you really addressed it. I'd like to see how these individual programs are really measuring success on their end. It seems to me that we ought to be looking at that and using that sort of as a basis as to how, as to how much they receive on a yearly basis. And so if we can get that information or have a meeting, Madam Chair, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely. After all the other thousands of meetings I'm about to have with Finance, yes, we'll squeeze that in somewhere. Any other questions for the Sergeant or Finance team? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is the police department donation of $412.
This is a donation from the Springfield Thunderbirds for the event that they held, where they worked between the Springfield Police Department and the Springfield Knights. So $412 was donated to the Springfield Police Department.
All right, thank you, TJ. Any questions there? Seeing none, order to approve a contract over three years for a five-year copier lease?
Yes. Yeah, so we do this every five years for the high-speed printer that we have in the computer room. It's a five-year lease, we lease from Xerox. It's basically designed to do all the production work that we do. It's obviously, you know, the amount that we put through these are not something that a small copier can handle. So these are all the things like 1099s, W2s, 1095s, et cetera. So this is every five years, you know, we beat up Xerox a little bit. They give us their best price, and usually we get more for less or the same amount, and that is the case here.
Thank you, Andy.
Yeah, we also help out the police department with the Good Neighbor Booklets. Probably once a month, we do 500 of them for them. We try to help out some of the other departments with it too, because it's just easy for us to print the high-volume stuff than it is for them to pay exorbitant amounts and put them on the smaller printers.
Gotcha. Thank you very much, Bob. Any questions? Counselors, your hand up from the last time. Counselor Govan? Okay, I'll order it. Thank you. Moving right along, order approving the CPC recommendation to fund the Historic Homes Rehabilitation Program?
Counselor, Bob McCarroll probably will be at the 7 o'clock. He might not have known about the Finance Subcommittee meeting. He would have been here if he did.
Okay.
But they do want to use some of their CPA funding to set up a community preservation, I'm sorry, Historic Homes Rehabilitation Program. And it's gonna be 234,640. I'm sure that he would be able to answer any questions or go over any details with you. I'm pretty sure he'll be at the 7 o'clock, because he did confirm with me this week that he would be.
Okay, does it say anything about who will oversee it, and if it's specific to the Mason Square or the McKnight area?
It does not say that it's specific to either of those two areas, but I can't say that it's not. But it doesn't say that it is in the information I have.
Does it say who will oversee the project? Or any of those type of details?
The... All it says is the community, the Springfield Community Preservation Committee. And the... I think it's just the CPC.
Okay. Counselor Letterman might have some insight on that. Counselor?
I don't have too much, Madam Chair. Actually, I had similar questions to yourself. I know that it is, the proposal is to do it in all the local historic districts, after they had, they had previously piloted it in McKnight. But my question was, Echo Dev had previously overseen it, and I wasn't sure that Echo Dev had agreed to do it again. So that's, that's the question that I had, was did, did, I mean, if Echo Dev did agree, that's great, we should do it. But we should get some clarity on that.
Thank you, Counselor, and hopefully Bob will be at the meeting to answer the question. Any other questions from counselors? All right. Free cash to 1331 Elm Street Project, 6.5 million.
So this is a request to transfer 6.5 million from certified free cash to the 1331 Elm Street Project. As you know, there's a collaborative of Mass Mutual, Opel, Wind Development, the city, the state, MGM, and then probably missing another partner or two, came together to do the project of 1331 Elm for the housing units in the building. And we have a project labor agreement on the project, which means it's gonna be all union labor. And on top of that, as you may have been following, construction costs are skyrocketing, inflation's skyrocketing. And when the project went out to bid, it was off by roughly $13 million. The state came in with 5.5 million to the project with a million-dollar contingency on top of that for six and a half, and the city is kicking in the other six and a half.
And how much are the developers kicking in?
I do not have the answers. I was hoping Tim Sheen would be on the line to take any questions, as this is an economic development project. I just know the financing piece, because we were asked to look at a variety of funding sources.
Okay, I'm gonna request that it does go to subcommittee, so we can get more details on the project. Do you know, at least if the housing is market rate, low income, you know any of that information, TJ?
So I believe it's market rate. I forget the term that they're using, that's similar to market rate. That's why I wanted Tim to be, so I could defer to him on all these questions that I know the council will be having on the issue.
And the developers are who again?
When and Opel are the preferred developers, together the preferred developers for the project.
So I'm gonna tell you, I have a problem with this project, TJ, because we didn't want to give a bigger break to the taxpayers of the City of Springfield on their property tax. Well, we want to invest 6.6 million. I know housing is important. There's a lot, a lot of developments that's about to start and going on currently. And I know it's important, and there's a shortage and is needed, and I know I'm gonna hear all that over and over and over again. But I'm getting calls from the residents of the City of Springfield, and we could have done more, and we still can do more. Yet we want to take this free cash and put it into the hands of developers once again. That is a problem to me, and I also want to know what they're gonna contribute back to the community, to the City of Springfield, besides the housing project. In addition, I'm gonna want to know those, those answers. I do want to know how much we have left in free cash. And then I turn it over to you.
Pat, do you happen to have that answer?
Yes, the balance right now is 22.6 million. So if this was to be approved, it would drop it down to 16, approximately 16.1 million.
16.1 million. And is there a scheduled plan of what we want to do with the rest of the 16.1 million?
We have not had a further conversation as to how to spend it strategically. I would prefer, as I'm already getting into reserves. However, I know there's some conversations that we should have about the strategic areas of investment.
Okay, thank you. Once again, probably be another finance committee meeting. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening to all, hello TJ, and to your team. TJ, I believe this is a PPP, right, project?
Not sure what a PPP is.
The private partnership.
Yeah, correct. It's a public-private partnership.
Right, and so, right, so we are suggesting 6.5 mil. City side, how much are the developers putting in?
That's a question that Counselor Whitfield just asked, and that is not a question that I have the answer to, that I'll defer to economic development.
If she, if she has that question, I did not hear it, having been cut out on and off. So Counselor Whitfield, you asked that question? I think we have a problem.
Yes, I did, sorry.
Okay, excellent. That was my question, so no need for the, to see. And TJ, thank you for pointing that to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Govan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm going along the lines of what you were saying. I'm not sure, you know, how much the developers were going to be putting in, but I know that they're, they'll potentially be getting 6.5 million dollars that they won't, it won't come out of their pocket. Free cash, and this is what I wanted to talk to you about, Counsel Whitfield. Residents of the City of Springfield have been clamoring about their property taxes. Small businesses are suffering with the property taxes. So I'm wondering if there's, at some point, and where, when, and where we can bring it up, where we might be able to potentially use some of this money to give some of our homeowners some relief, some of our small businesses some relief from the property taxes, especially in light of the ARPA funding, all the money that's coming into the city right now. And, you know, of course, the ARPA funds are eligible residents that can apply for them and go through that process. But I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can give our homeowners some relief and our small businesses some relief.
So Counselor Govan, and to the rest of the counselors that have asked about property tax relief and continue to ask about property tax relief, we have done extensive research into whether or not we can set up a program to provide that for residents and small businesses and others that's outside the typical 41(c) exemptions, which is 70 and older, or down to 65 and older. We were told by the state that in order to do a program that kind of meets the needs and the goals of the city, it would end up having to be a home rule petition as approved by the city and presented to the state and the governor for approval.
I'm wondering if that's something that we can do, because, you know, I'm not saying, you know, eliminate property taxes, period, of course. You know, but if they can have maybe six months or one year of relief, I think it would make a big difference to the, you know, the homeowners and to the small businesses that are operating here, you know, especially in light of, you know, I think, Pat talked about the gas prices earlier, you know, and that's just one thing. Right now, a gallon of milk is almost $4. Eggs are, you know, these things that people are paying a lot of money for. And of course, the property taxes are going up because of the, the housing market, you know, and it just doesn't seem like it's fair that everyone else in the city and developers are getting money, and our homeowners are really basically being left behind. So thank you for that.
Yeah, so I've been working very closely with the entire Board of Assessors, the three members of the board. In addition to Lindsey and Pat Burns, we're trying to work on a variety of options that does what we have all talked about needing to be done. And, you know, I haven't gotten to the point where drafting the home rule, but that is something that I am very intrigued by in the sense of, if it's a way to allow us to do it and do it right, and... That is something that I, uh, am very intrigued by in the sense of, if it's a way to allow us to do it and do it right, and. I think it's something we might want to put forward.
I appreciate that, and let me know if there's anything that I can do to help, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, thank you TJ, um, and I did want to say thank you for the research that you are doing, I know that. I'm definitely on you about doing more for the taxpayers of the city of Springfield, and that's because they are on us. All the time, whenever I see someone, they're asking this question about help, and we definitely want to be able to offer some relief. Also, my other point is, I asked for five million dollars to reduce their burden just by a little bit. And that was shot down, yet we want to give six point five million to developers for a contract. And I just really need to know how much they're contributing before I can even like fathom approving, um, such a large amount like that. Um, Counselor Allen?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair, um, just a couple of questions on. The free cash number, the Pat, the number you just, Pat Burns, the number you just quoted. Fifteen or twenty million or something, that's this year's free cash only, right? That's not, uh, that's not our total free cash.
Yes, uh, we had twenty-seven point six million certified by the Department of Revenue back in November, we've committed. Five million to reduce the tax rate two point five for the year we're currently in and two point five for next year. And then, uh, subtracting this pending order of six point five million, that would bring our balance down to approximately sixteen point one million.
Okay, and that would be the, from that amount that was certified in November?
Correct.
Okay, and, and what's the big free cash number? I mean, or, excuse me, um, not, you know, stabilization reserve, fifty or forty-seven or something like that?
Yes, the, uh, stabilization balance presently is forty-five million, twenty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars.
So forty-five million in stabilization reserve and still, if, and at this point, twenty-two million in free cash. With this thing pending, um, okay, thank you, thanks, Madam.
And can you just clarify, Pat, what percentage of the amount that we're supposed to have in free cash is that? I think we're supposed to have five percent or more or something like that?
Right, the, uh, stabilization balance is supposed to be between five and fifteen percent of the operating budget. And right now, it's approximately five point eight percent of the budget, so we're above the amount we need to have presently.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Pat, um, and just for the finance team, when we, when we do get the, um, budget for review. Definitely going to be looking closely at how much property tax we are trying to add on to balance the budget this year. I think we could do a better job there, asking those questions, not having such a. Large increase to balance the budget upfront, because then October, we're kind of forced into making a decision. To, um, use those funds to balance the budget, so I'm going to be looking at budgets very closely this year, and like I said, I don't want the little. Pamphlets, I would like a budget document to see the whole story, um, because we have to figure out how not to. Put the burden, shift the burden back to the residents of the city of Springfield, especially when we have such large amounts of free cash. And we definitely could have offered more of a relief this year, we might not have a year where we have free cash like this again. But this year we did have it, and we didn't do the best that we could as an administration, um, to give relief to the residents of the city of Springfield, so. Um, it's going to be a more thorough review from me anyway, when we do get the budget document, and I just wanted to point that out. Any further questions from counsel on this subject?
I just want to say I totally agree with this going to committee.
Okay, thank you, Tim, um, we'll send it to committee then, thank you. I muted. Um, the next item is budget transfer across departments for a hundred and three thousand.
Good evening, Counselor, this is for the, uh, Park Department, it is for basically, uh, rate increases since the budget was established in June. We have, uh, water and sewer at thirty-three thousand, gasoline and diesel at thirty-five thousand. And, oh, I'm sorry, I'm doing the facility one, the park ones are water and sewer at twelve thousand. Merchant fees for the golf courses, eight thousand each, gasoline and diesel at fifty thousand. And then waste removal at twenty-five thousand, and on that one, our prior vendor is no longer. Uh, accepting our, um, bulk waste, so we had to find a new vendor, and that's K and W Material Recycling. And they were more expensive at twenty-five thousand to get through the year, so these should get us through, and we're. We're seeing price increasing across the board, so we probably will be back one more time before the end of the fiscal year. For things like fertilizer, seed increases and so forth, just basic maintenance cost, lumber, everything is just going up.
Can you guys still see me? Wait, okay, I lost you guys for a minute now, sorry, um, any questions for Pat Sullivan? All right, the next one is another, um, budget transfer across apartments for two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, and Counselor, this is for the facility side of the department, again, water and sewer at thirty-three thousand. Gasoline and diesel at thirty-five thousand and snow removal at a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And some of these were just rate increases since we established the budget in June. And on snow, we, we don't budget a lot for snow, um, so it, it's a way to just keep everything in real time. And we always come in at the end of the season for a, a snow removal, uh, transfer.
Thank you, Pat, any questions for Pat?
I have one question.
Sure.
Um, so Pat, are you referring to, you know, gasoline and stuff, I get, you're referring to the water and sewer. Bill just being bigger than it was a year ago, you mean it increases in the water and sewer bill?
Yeah, we had, they had a rate increase, and, uh, so that a rate increase, when you figure that we have six point five million. Square feet of building space, we use a lot of water in our municipal fire stations, libraries, all the buildings across the city. Um, our splash pads on the park side got used more, it was, uh, we had some heat waves and so forth, so all that relates to more water usage.
Uh, in addition to that, uh, Counselor Allen, in addition to that, uh, water and sewer are under a mandate to add, uh, updated. Um, valves and, uh, readers of, of our usage. So that's another reason why it's going up, is that they're, they're putting on, on other areas in the city that may not have had a monitor before, and then they have to attach one now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm on a meeting, um, final. Final order is order accepting three million from National Passenger Railroad Corporation, Amtrak. And approving the execution of a memorandum of understanding agreement and a real estate license agreement with National Passenger Railroad. Railroad Corporation. Anyone here to speak to that?
Good evening, Chris Signal, DPW Director, excuse me, um. About two and a half, three years ago, Amtrak closed the Actra crossing into Riverfront Park. Um, after having a number of discussions with them, Amtrak has agreed to provide the city three million dollars. To, uh, perform a project on the land side, uh, city side of the railroad tracks. In order to create a, uh, better access, ADA compliant access through the existing underpass. Uh, for residents to be able to access the park, uh, and be in compliance of ADA rules and guidelines. Uh, this location is obviously going to be the day-to-day access, we can still use the existing crossing during major events, Fourth of July. Uh, September eleventh events, et cetera, but this is to make the, uh, existing crossing compliant. Uh, for residents and for the city to be able to use it on a day-to-day basis.
Any questions from counselors?
I have a question, Tracy.
Sure.
Thank you, Chris, so that money, the three million, is it money we're giving them and they run the project, or? How, how does that work with your staff and them?
I'm sorry, they're, they're giving it to us, uh, we are running a project, we had a phase, it's basically called Phase Three of Riverfront Park. Uh, it's on the, uh, city side of the, uh, railroad tracks. Uh, so, in, in basically, it's in, in response to them closing the Actra crossing. So, uh, they're giving us the funds, uh, it's a reimbursement project, basically, so every, every time we spend money, we get reimbursed from them. And it's up to a three million dollar max, and that is both for design and construction of the project that we need to do. The other thing that we negotiated with them was, uh, basically no fees at all from Amtrak for what we have to do on our, uh. On our, uh, project, which they were, uh, it took us a while to get to that point, and they have been nothing but. Absolutely horrible to deal with on, uh, a couple of projects that we've been dealing with. So we've been in a little bit, let me put it this way, I've been in a pretty good shouting match with them over the past few months, but this, we finally got into this agreement. Uh, where we've been able to get the three million dollars.
All right, great, and you guys will run it or you'll sub it out or whatever?
Yeah, we will hide, we'll go through, we'll hire a, a, a design team. Uh, the major issue that we're going to be dealing with is that we have to do something, there's a flood wall right adjacent to the underpass. That we have to do some work in, so with that sort of work, rather than, uh, the previous project, we'll run through DCAC. Um, so we're running this one through DPW, because we're the ones that deal with, uh, Army Corps, so, uh, Pete Garvey and myself will be running the project.
Yeah, great, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, any other questions from counsel? All right, seeing none, that is the last item on the agenda, so we will adjourn the meeting, I thank you all for your time and efficiency. Have a great one, see you at.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, see you soon.
See ya.